This conference will now be recorded.
It is our tradition to start with a pledge of allegiance, so if you would all please join me. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America.
On which it stands. Thank you. And because we're doing this virtually, if I may, get a roll call from the RDA members. Dick Whalen.
Dick Whalen here.
Mary Beth Bigley.
Present.
And who else do we have? Randy?
Randy.
Present.
Thank you. And Tony Nizardo is going to be a little bit late, going to join us. I think I've got everybody right. Mary Dean?
Here.
Then along with us, we have Mary Dean from Economic Development and Bruce Jackson are sitting in attorney. So with that, we have one item on our agenda for this evening. And well, first, before I do that, can I have a a Google of last month's minutes, may I?
So moved, Randy.
First by Randy, second by Dick. All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye, cheer votes aye, passage unanimously. Okay. So now, I would like to start by saying that the only thing on our agenda this evening is a discussion with the town council in regards to the center school site. And with that, I would like to ask a couple of things. Anybody that might not be talking, because it gets difficult with backlash sometimes, please put your computer or your phone on mute. It'd be appreciated. And if you want to talk, then please signify by not to your name. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to Chris Pia, Chair.
Thank you, George. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So what we're going to do, so tonight, thank, good evening, everybody. Good afternoon, good evening. Thank you for joining us. Chris Pia, Town Council Chair. Tonight is a joint RDA Town Council meeting, really just an informative meeting for us to have in the dialogue and conversation about the future center school property and the location. As you know, the RDA and the RFP that was chosen presented to us about, about six, eight weeks ago for, you know, in that time range. And one of the things that we had discussed was having a follow-up meeting, and that's what this is. No, no decisions are going to be made tonight at all. This is a pure conversation for us to start working together collaboratively, to find out what is the best use long-term for that property and location. So one of the things I'd like to just really quick is identify, do a roll call of the council that is on the call. So Margo, if you can, for that, for the record, please.
Yep. Ms. Shake. Mr. Tavarez.
Here.
Mr. Harden.
I s- I just saw him look.
I saw it. Mr. Harden.
Yes, I'm here.
Thank you. Mr. Can. Mr. Poisson. Mr. Perillo.
Perillo's here.
Mr. Connor. Mr. O'Brien.
I'm here.
Ms. Dancho.
Present.
And Chairman Pia is here.
Thank you, Margo. So what would, Mr., so George, Mr. Per, thank you very much for, and to the RDA, all you guys for doing what you do. You, I've always said, you know, what makes the town move forward is the committees, commissions, the volunteers that really do a lot of the hard work and labor and kick it up, obviously, to the council. And, you know, the RDA is, in my opinion, one of the, one of the star groups of the town because for years now, even dating back.
They do.
Who was that?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Tavarez, yes.
I just got a text message from Caitlin. She is on, but for some reason, she's having trouble with her audible.
Okay. Thank you. You know what? Margo and Dave, let's pause for a moment. Margo and Dave, I know we have a bunch of unidentified callers that are muted. I want to make sure, I'd like to get Ms. Shake identified, please. Caitlin, can you hear?
Hi, Caitlin. I can hear you.
I got you. Caller 11 is Caitlin. Okay. Thank you, Caitlin.
I'm going to stay on as long as I can on that work on my break.
That's fine. We got you later identified now, so we're, you're good.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, Margo. Dave, if you want to mute everybody else other than the council and RDA. Okay. They're getting to that. Okay. So just continuing on to the RDA, thank you, guys, because, you know, it's, it's one of those groups of people that has basically been at the forefront of essentially taking properties off that have not been on the tax rolls for years now and really putting a lot of hard work in to put them back on the tax rolls that many, many people don't even realize. So thank you for everything, even predating the center school. I just wanted to say that because I know it's been a while. George, if, if we could, I'd like to just first start off with a couple of questions. I'll throw them at you, and if you want to delegate them to anybody on, on your group, I'd be happy to have that. If you could just bring us, you know, we had the, we had the presentation, right? Basically, let's, I want to just start this dialogue, not over, but kind of from the beginning as to how did you guys first start with this? I know we had the threats. I had the summary from, you know, the, that NDC put together with threats, group meetings, what have you, whatever name you want to call them. I know there was a lot of public input from a couple of years ago. I myself participated in one of them back in, I think it was 2017 is when we did this stuff. Bring us just up to date in a summary, how many of those had? How many people put public input in? And basically, you know, when, when the RFP went out, of the top four to five, if there were 10 major things that were identified from the public that came from this, did we use the top four to five? And how were they incorporated into the RFP? That's what I'd like to kind of start off with.
Okay, sure, Chris. Thank you. First of all, I must admit, when I was in preparation with the meeting.
George?
Yeah.
Your audio is very poor.
Oh, no.
Maybe mute yourself and unmute or something. Yeah, I'm, I'm assuming I'm not the only one that heard it that way.
Can you hear me out there? I guess not.
It's really, George.
Hello, everyone.
Hey, Tom. Thanks for joining us. Too bad I told you I had a technical.
George, you want to try calling in on your phone, because whatever audio you're using is, is very muffled.
Yeah, that's what I was trying to do.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
All right. Bear with us a second.
It always starts off with that. For some reason, it deteriorates. I'm not sure what happens. I'm going to go in for one second.
You can probably mute the screen, George, while you're doing it. I would mute the screen.
Just a meeting. I think, no, the public can.
Hey, Paul, I can hear you. FYI. Okay.
Yeah. Okay. Now, just put in the speaker here.
Yep, yep. And Margo, just for the record, Mr. Nizardo joined the call and is on now.
Hey, can you hear me now?
Hello, 611.
Is this better?
George. Yeah, that's bad.
Computer, George, if you're doing it on the phone. Is this better?
That is fine.
Are we good now?
We'll deal with, we'll manage it. Yeah, go ahead.
Sorry about that. I'm not sure what to, I think the more people get on, the more the process gets deteriorated, I believe. Anyway, so when I was starting to do the research for tonight's meeting to just make sure I had my facts aligned, it's hard to believe that me and my fellow RDA members are three years older than when we started this process. Because as Chris mentioned, we did start this in 2017, which is kind of amazing to me. But I'll start with by saying the reason we started this was because of the response from the public from an initial feasibility study that was done way, way, way a long time ago, and it had to do with trying to receive funds from the state of Connecticut. And so the intent was to go out to the public to find out, you know, what the public had in mind and what they would like to see for this, for this particular site. On June 7th, on June in 2017, we had a meeting at the Baldwin Center. On September of 2017, we had a meeting at the Mill River Country Club. And on the 28th of September, we had a meeting at the Birds Eye, the old Birds Eye School. And, and our largest open house that we had was up to 70 participants, and we had listed over 60 ideas. So it was a great response. I think all the folks that were the monitors of all the different tables with the questions and so on and so forth did a great job in coordinating the meeting and pulling in all the facts and figures that we were looking, looking for to include in the RFQ process. So there were four categories that we sort of honed in on: economic development, housing and residential development, streetscape concerns, and then the input of retail and commercial development, parking. And so one of the things that we took off the table immediately was a parking garage. If you all remember, there was the rumor of four or five-story parking garage, so that was never even put into consideration, and it is still not into consideration as we see this, as we go today. So I'd like to just read this to you, because I think it's important to understand the process and how open it was and how transparent it was. So after about 30 minutes, the organizers asked everyone to pause and handed out an equal number of voting dots. The organizers then told the participants to circulate again, reading all of the ideas that were written down on the flip charts, and to place a dot next to the specific idea to show support for. That became our form of voting at the end of the day. The more dots next to the idea, of course, the more support we received, and in the events, had a lot of energy. And at the largest open house, as I mentioned, we had over 70 participants with over 60 different ideas. So on the economic development side, one of the big concerns was we wanted to make sure that there was revenue coming back to the town, obviously decreasing taxes, more entertaining opportunities, perhaps a theater, and then the attraction of young adults, which seemed to be a common theme throughout all the responses. From residential housing point of view, less housing, more retail development, which I'll circle back to. Any housing development should have retail on the ground floor. Again, I'll circle back to that. Once again, attract young adults, and then artist lofts and studios to showcase work. So the idea of making this sort of a synergistic artist, possibly, type of a building. On the streetscape side, small art indoor theater space once again. Relocate train section, train station to 99 year and connect to Main Street via the walkway. Pedestrian-friendly neighborhood. And then on the retail, commercial, and parking side, performance art center, theater, music, and dance, local food market, please, no parking garage at center school. So those were the bullets that we ended up putting in the RFQ that went out to the public. And along with that, there was a specific requirement that we had that we wanted to assure that the developer that was going to be putting in a, a response had TOD experience, because we felt that having TOD experience was important to our mission and to our goals. We got all the information back on the RFQs, and frankly, we, well, I'll step back for a second. So the first pass, we had, unfortunately, we only had one response, and that was a response to some out of state. And in our opinion, that responder wasn't exactly what we were looking for. And to the fact that we only had one respondent, we thought we needed to sort of regroup and try to figure out how to track more developers. So we did that, and we had an informal walkthrough with many developers, some which I solicited, some which Economic Development solicited, and other people on the RDA solicited. And we had a walk around a property, and that resulted in three responses to the RFQ. Based on those responses, we conducted interviews. The RDA and the subcommittee attended. And each one of the respondents to the RFQ were asked to basically present their design moving forward. Making this very long story short, after that, it was a unanimous decision to move in the direction of Zenith for many reasons. Along with the bullets I mentioned before in regards to our setting of the precedence in regards to the RFQ, in more of the King's English, if you will, we thought a very a requirement to be very sensitive to our Sutton Street neighbors. So therefore, the scale of anything on Sutton Street, we wanted to respond to a more of a residential feeling. We wanted to include, because we purchased, as you all know, 952 East Broadway, so we wanted to make sure that that was included in the RFP some way, shape, or form. Along with that, we all know that we're right adjacent to the historical district, so we wanted to make sure also that we responded to the historic district. Now, you don't necessarily want to have a design that completely mimics that, because we don't want to go back in time. However, we do want to respect the fact that there's colonial vintage neighborhood next to us, and we wanted to make sure we weren't totally turning our back on this, making this some ultra, you know, contemporary solution. We wanted to be pedestrian friendly. Now, what we meant by that was we wanted people, of course, being in the TOD district, wanted to make sure that people can walk to the train station and also walk to adjacent retail spots. We mentioned in the RFQ that the Board of Education building is a possibility to be included in this proposal. And the reason I say possibility, because at this point in time, we don't have a new location for the Board of Education, but we certainly, if it makes this project more viable, the mayor and Economic Development, more aggressive, are just trying to find a new location. And then along with that, possible public parking. So the solution that Zenith came up with, we felt responded to all those components. Along Sutton Street, they have duplexes that are two-story in nature, with park with a garage and a driveway. So for all intents and purposes, if nothing else happened, it would be as if somebody came in and built duplexes alongside, excuse me, on the other side of Sutton Street. They responded to the density in their initial and their first response. The density, we thought, was a little bit too low, so we asked them to go back to the drawing board, so to speak, and, and increase the density, because it wasn't achieving what we're trying to do. And then I want to bounce back to the retail component. In this proposal, and in the other proposals, there were no retail component. The reason for that is all of the developers responded, today's market, in order for the project to be successful, they didn't think that retail was the right thing to do for many reasons. First of all, below residences, as the days march on, it's one of the more difficult rentable spaces to, to lease out. So therefore, it puts the project a little bit at jeopardy in regards to its success. So all the developers chose to have residential on the first floor. The way we solved it in an indirect method was we have a large, well, I should say Zenith proposed based on our request, a large, I'll call it a decorative stair that comes from the residential center school project down to the retail components. So Vinnie Chase's property, and it would also get connected to all the Main Street properties across the street. Along with this, we gave everybody the complete streets proposals that I was also part of in the committee, and wanted to make sure that we were tying in the unisense of the complete streets along with this project, and then the possibility of public parking, which also meant the possibility of town participation in regards to that. And I'll bounce back to that in a couple of minutes. So what we have is we have a project that has townhouses that respects Sutton Street, that are designed in a very, in my opinion, very nice nature in regards to respect for scale. We have parking that's totally hidden off the street, and it's inside within the intern of the development process and proposal. And then we have a four-to-five-story apartment house of one bedrooms and, I believe, a couple, two bedrooms and studios. And then Zenith's architect did very nicely, um, design attempt to tear us down on the end towards the board of ed building to have outdoor amenities, as well as to respond to the scale of the three-story board of ed building. And then inside the building are some workshop spots, location, for people that might be in the building that want to just basically go downstairs to work, as possibly people from the outside. I wanted to bounce back to the public parking component, because one thing that's still on the table that we keep on trying to propose as a potential, the site, if you can all visualize, is, I'll say, a parking lot above Vinnie Chase's property. So in theory, we can drive almost straight in off of Vinnie Chase's property to go to underground parking, to either take all of the parking off of the site, or the majority parking off the site, and it'll provide public parking for people coming, you know, to visit the restaurants and all the other stores. And the reason I say that's on the table is because that's something that, if it had to happen or wanted to happen by the town, I think there would have to be participation from the town from a dollar point of view, because all developers told us that the cost of underground parking would exceed any proposal and therefore make the project not viable. So that, that piece of it would have to later on be discussed. The only thing I would say, in our mind, meaning the RDA, that we weren't satisfied with, and I also think it came back later on after Zenith presented to town council, was also the financial stacking. As you all know, there's a request for a lot of state funding, and so there's some nervousness both on our committee as well as the town council, that that process can take too long, and also at the end of the day, require, or at the end of the day, in failing, which could have put us out one or two years. So I think the consensus, at this point in time at least, is to get more private funding, possibly along with the town, and less state funding. So I think I've covered all the components that I wanted to cover. And if I missed anything, anybody on the RDA, if you want to chime in, if I missed something, please do so. So first, I'll ask that question. Did anybody else think of anything else?
Anyone from the RDA?
Oh, yes, it's.
Chris, yeah, I was just going to, and this is, goes way back into ancient history, but when this, unfortunately, that whole reference to the parking garage thing actually came by way of an example that, I guess it was one of us used that in one of the presentations. I can't remember who had used it. But in any event, it was just meant to be an example. It was not meant to be a game plan in any way, or a proposal, or anything like that. But unfortunately, that example just caught fire with an awful lot of people. And, you know, it was a poor choice of words, so be it, but I, you know, I think that's, this often comes up, it still does, from people I've talked to in town and whatnot, as, you know, what are you doing with that? We don't want a parking garage. Well, you know, it's, it's not going to be a parking garage, so. And that certainly has been, we tried to make that very clear as a commitment, but you know how, some, you know how that goes sometimes. So anyway, I just wanted to throw that in. Thank you.
Thank you, Dick.
Yeah, thanks, Dick. And I'd like, I'd like to add to that is that that was done strictly when the town, and this was frankly before my time, but I've learned it as we go through the process, it was strictly when the town was going after state funding to clean up the site. And so to do that, they had to have some sort of proposal before the state to receive the funds, which we received, I think it was $1.2 million to clean up and knock down the center school site. And Dick is right, that started a rumor, factual rumor I must had, because it was written in the original description of the site, but that was one of the things that we totally took off the table. So because Dick mentioned it, I do want to make it clear that the parking garage, if you will, that I call it, would be totally underground. So all you would see would be an opening that would go into the parking underneath and out. That's all you would see. So thanks, Dick, for that clarification. Anybody else on the RDA?
Hi, it's Mary Beth Bigley here. As far as the underground parking possibility, is that even feasible in that area? Because there's been a history of flooding and water problems in that area a lot.
Yeah, so as I, as an architect, and I say to everybody, there's a solution for every problem, so if you question, yes, it's doable. It's an expensive doable. Parking garages, when we do budgets for parking garages, they typically run about $15,000 per space. So if I need to make that, I'm going to call it a waterproof basin, if you will, and adding drainage and so on, it might have to be more than that. But Mary Beth, that's a good point, because before we went, before we would go forward with that, we would do all of our due diligence upfront with town engineering to make sure at the end of the day, it could be engineered to be successful, and then if, and then if so, at what cost? So, but a good point. Thank you. Randy, you're tapping at the bit. Go.
No, I'm not tapping at the bit. Together with Tony, we had some real concerns about how this deal is going to be financed, and the developer's role, and how the developer structured their fees. So from my point of view, it lacked a lot of clarity. Some of these developers, the questions I had is, one, those developments that they have completed, do they still own them? Or are they part of an investment strategy where they exited? The other question that jumped out at me is they have a front-end load for a developer's fee, which is fine. That's, that's in keeping with industry standard. But what pointed out is they have an exit developer's fee as well when the project is done. And usually, when you have an investment group that's funding these projects, the developer has what they call a promote. So at the end of the project, that promote comes from the investment group. It's not a separate line item charge to the, so a couple of those things that, that jumped out at me are, are such that I think we need more clarity on how this is going to be financed, how the, how the partnership is put together, what are the, what are the components of the partnership as it relates to the financing of the project, and, and also the fee structure. That's all I had.
Thank you. Thank you.
So George, George, a couple of things that I'll just first start off with, with, thank you first off for the summary of how we got, essentially got here. You know, keeping in mind the work in the time that people did put in, especially the constituents and everybody who lives in the area, the summary of community input is, in my opinion, the most important aspect going forward. I think we would all agree. How do we, whether, whether it's a new RFP, whether it's a coming back to, coming back to the drawing table, you know, what we eventually want to have there, we, you know, I'm, I'm of the mindset, so everyone knows, I don't want to just put something in there tomorrow just to say we put something in there tomorrow. I want to make sure that whatever we do, and I think everyone would agree with me, is the right thing for long-term. All right? And I don't necessarily like putting, as much as I do believe in implementation timelines and holding people accountable to timelines and goals, I don't think we have to absolutely rush something tomorrow. Now, we have a group of people on this call between the council and the RDA that are professionals and understand how to basically continue to move a project forward, and I want to make sure that we just kind of keep that all in mind. George, to, quick question regarding the, the underground aspect that you had mentioned. I was going to actually ask that, I have never, I've never was a fan of a parking garage. Frankly, anything above ground protruding out, I, I just never liked the idea of it, quite frankly, just because out of respect for the residents on Sutton, in, in the aspect of historical district, which I do believe we, we need to protect. The aspect of you discussing parking under, under and not essentially increasing the, the footing there, would, I would imagine we'd have to hire a structural engineer to get some cost analysis on what that would essentially look like to the town. Is that something the RDA could look at?
So, yes and no. I think it would be, it'd be premature to look at it without a design, you know, because you need to understand the square footage, and then, as I mentioned before, we'd need to understand, you know, the water table height and the water table impact of that area, as Mary Beth mentioned before, because we all know that in years past, that area flooded much more severely than it does today. So I think in order to get a good and honest answer to that question, Chris, I think we might want to, if this were to go out, back out to RFP, we might want to have that become part of the design to move. to move forward. And then, once we made that selection, that, and at that point, it'd become part of their finance model.
Understood. And, you know, taking as much parking, if you want to, if you will, off the top, for more open space, more green space, I'm all for. I, I do, frankly, I love that it's a beautiful open space right now. And in trying to keep that, that feel to that, I, for me, is important. And I know that it was a large, a large factor for a lot of people, too. So I'm, I just want to, I want to explore every, every avenue to potentially get to an endgame. And I think that's an option. It's, I think it's an intelligent option to look at. And we explore it. Just my two cents. Any other, any other counselors? I'll highlight some counselors. I got you, Paul.
Paul Taveras, District Three. I, I agree with a lot of your points, Chris. Definitely with open space and, and something, again, that's going to, not everyone's going to be satisfied, but definitely want something that's going to increase revenue for the town. I just want to know, you know, we talked about state footing, funding. Is there, has the pandemic caused any kind of negative influence or impact on that? George, or anybody?
Maybe Mary Dean, can you answer that?
Mary? Standby.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yep.
Um, so when I was talking to Terry and Andrea, you know, a few months ago, this year was a year where there was some transition, and they felt that the timing was probably better. And Terry or Andrea can speak to this, I know they're on the line. Going into the next year, there were a lot of questions with some of the changes that were being implemented, and they weren't sure how they were going to work. So I think that was, I don't know if it was due to COVID, but it was a conversation we had, I, I've lost track of time, but it was several months ago, just regarding some of the funding that they were looking for.
Thank you. Thank you, Mary. Thank you, Paul. Any other counselors? Question? Any counselors that would like to be acknowledged?
This is Laura Damschau, District Ten.
Laura.
Hi, everybody. And I thank you again for the synopsis of the presentation that we had a couple of months ago. I'm surprised that out of all of the feasibility studies you had with the public, that, I think, George, you mentioned that housing seemed to have won out with your voting process. My concern is that, once you start creating a housing, a dense housing complex, that property in essence is no longer public, it becomes a private housing space. So I don't see how doing a project like this would benefit the town as a whole, other than creating more revenue in the way of residential taxes. But I don't understand how that would be something that any of these feasibility studies would have preferred over something else that would have been enjoyed by more of our town residents as a whole. And then as far as the parking goes underground, I have a feeling that that's just not going to be able to happen, because as Mary Beth said, we all know that it floods there. I think it's going to turn out where that's just going to be impossible to fund. Realistically, that is not going to happen. The only thing I can think of would be to use the first floor of this five-story building and make it four stories of housing, and then do the parking as the very ground floor. But it doesn't sound like that would be amenable to Zennelith, as far as the proposal went. I think that there's a lot of talking that needs to happen. I think that taking the space away from all of the residents as a whole needs to be considered. I don't see myself walking through a housing project that I don't have a, a home in. So this is just going to be a private area in the middle of our town, and I'm not really sure if that's the direction we want to go. I respect the work that has gone into this, but I'm going to need a lot of convincing.
Thank you, Laura, for your thoughts. Any other counselors?
Hey, Chris, Bill O'Brien, Ninth District.
Yep, go ahead, Billy.
I, I love the idea of the underground parking, but I agree. It's never going to happen with the water problems we have. And I think, reach out to John Casey, our town engineer. I think he has a better handle on our water issues throughout town than any expert you might hire. And if we want to consider a parking garage, it seems to me the most fiscally responsible and simplest solution would be to put one out on the current parking lot of the railroad station. That would add a lot of more parking space. But I think anywhere in the center, it's something we can't do.
Okay. Thank you, Bill. Any other counselors that haven't spoken? A couple other on? No? Okay. Just chime in if you have anything. George, another, another item that, you know, again, going back to the NDC and the summary of the main top four items, under, I just want to ask you, under the, the residential housing aspect, I know we, it was referred to as, forgive me on the terminology, but I believe it was referred to as workforce housing, right? Under the Zenith presentation, I, I do, I, as well as, as much as I mentioned before, I would like to see this as much as, you know, keeping the integrity of the historic district, also an open space. But I am not, I'm not completely opposed to any type of workforce housing, if you will, there. I'm just wondering, and again, I understand from a financial standpoint, whichever developer comes in and submits to the RFQ or RFPs, they have to have some skin in the game, and I understand that from a business perspective. But from a workforce housing development, how much of that point was driven home in the RFQ, excuse me, I keep confusing the terms, when, when it went out this, the second time, from a workforce housing perspective?
Mary Dean, can you answer that? Because I'm not sure. I don't, I don't recall us having any mandate in regards to that. We said we'd be interested in that. Each developer came back with a different proportion. I think in the Zenith proposal, we all felt that the proportion of workforce versus market rate was offset from where we want it to be. Mary Dean, can you add to that?
Sure. It was not something that was mandatory at all. The other two did not provide it. And when we had some of our meetings and our open shreds, and we had an outdoor living room space meeting, that was something that some of the young people said they would, there isn't affordable housing in Stratford for young professionals, and they would like to see that. So that was very appealing to us in terms of providing, you know, young professionals to have a, be able to afford to have a place to live, and it was right by the train station.
Okay. Mary, maybe a question for you as well, just a follow-up. Being that it is TOD, and I don't know all the, the pros and cons technically for, that could fall under TOD, is that something that is an advantage to us if we wanted to rework this RFP and go back, go back to market, you know, have you? And let me ask one other thing to that point. When did the second RFQ, RFP go out approximately? Month?
I've lost track, but I think it was last summer, right, George? It was 2019. Yeah. And it was, it was a year after the first one had gone out.
Okay, so.
TOD allows us to have quite a bit of density, and the, the project, the development that Zenith provided us was far less than what even TOD would, would, is allowed in TOD.
Okay. Yeah. And I'm not saying, so I'm clear, I'm not saying I want to make the most dense project here, but I just want to understand what our options are with that. You know, and to that point, that, that's why I asked, you know, when this, our, this second one went out, as, you know, anybody can attest to on this, on this call, the summer of 19 is dramatically different than the summer of 2020. And we're all living in a very different world and economy at this time. And, you know, my, my initial just thought slash concern is, are the same things, are the same people, if we were to put out a new RFP tomorrow with the same exact type of language to say, you know, let's throw another line in, in the, in the ocean, you know, are the same people going to bite based off of being 2020 and what's going on? And do we need to tweak it because of the environment that we're living in? And also, you know, a slow pause, if you will, is that, is that something that we, you know, basically take under account over the next few months to, to really work through what we really want this to be long term? Those are just my thoughts, and I'm just speaking out loud.
Yeah. So Chris, I'll, I'll, I'll take that, if I may. I think it's hard to predict that. The one thing that we, with the site, to, I'm going to say, quite a few developers that walked it, is that it's, it's balancing on being too small of a project, right? So people got to get very creative to try to make this, this size of a project work. And I think the three respondents did a good job with that, with Zenith sort of rising to the top. To, to say, if we put out another RFQ, and we put some of the, some more mandates in it that we spoke about tonight and/or as a follow-up to this meeting, as such as the financial stacking, that, let's just say we wanted it to all be private money.
Right.
I think Zenith might drop out, because their, their business model, if you will, is at least, as far as they told us, was the reliance on state money, because they're very good at knowing how to do that, knowing how to position and posture the building. I'm not saying it's the right thing and the best thing for the town, I'm just saying that that's their particular form. Since this, we've had interest in another developer that's doing work in town, that actually is very interested in coming on board in the next RFP. So if we lost one, we might get another. And if we put this back out in the paper, and the time is different, we can, you know, maybe get the same developers, maybe get new developers, some may drop off, some may add on. So it's a really tough call. I think the second developer that we had, if you will, say second place, their project, we thought was two kind of same old same old, it was just a lot of townhouses, like a little dense village. And we just think it wasn't in keeping with all the other components and all the other mandates that we had. When we finalized the last two candidates, they did not want to participate in a redesign. They were at the point, this is it, sort of take it, leave it. If you select us, we'll talk to you about further design. But they weren't interested in further design. Zenith, however, accepted it in open arms, and they increased the density, and they did some other things that we asked of them, and they came back with a second design. So it's a tough call, Chris, to answer your question. I will tell you that in my arena, as an architect, there's still a lot of TOD projects going on despite the pandemic. There's still a lot of development going on despite the pandemic. I think everybody's got their vision on moving forward in life, and developers are willing to take a little bit more of a risk maybe than they were back then. So I haven't seen the slowdown at this point in time. So that's, that's the best I can answer.
Now, and George, thank you for providing, again, this is your, your, your group has a lot more insight in that, in that avenue than, than I do, and between all of you. So I appreciate the honesty and the insight. Any other questions for counselors right now, or RDA? I think Tony.
Hey, Chris, Bill O'Brien again?
Uh, Bill, hold on one second, Bill. Tony, go ahead, Tony.
I just wanted to clarify the semantics of affordable housing, market rate housing, and low-income housing. So our, obviously, market rate is whatever the market will bear. Affordable, which is a component of really the 38 dash, 30 dash AG, which is the state. Affordable has a component, two components. 15% is 80% of the median, and 15% would be 60% of the median. And then, then there's low-income housing, which is basically government-assisted, or getting there, getting to that number, which means you need government assistance. So when and if you put something out, you have to decide what you want. The, I believe the proposal would, included low-income houses. Is that correct, George?
I thought it was, I thought it was the other. I'm trying to recall, Tom, but I.
I was, I was referring to, I was, Tony, I was, just for clarity, I was referring to the term workforce housing, which was, I believe, used in the presentation. And my understanding of that was, again, trying to incorporate younger people in, commuters to get in at an affordable workforce. I, you know, I don't know the exact, you know, cut line on the definition.
That's why I wasn't sure what a, what a workforce housing is, but they're very clear.
I can tell you what workforce housing is. Workforce housing is, you know, geared towards, you know, you look at the police force that come in at starting salaries, nurses, the people that live in, in your town, the professionals, teachers that are not, you know, it's the, the early years of the, whatever income these professions have, workforce tends to, to fall into that category.
Okay, got it.
So they live in the town they work in.
That would be affordable. Chris, it's Laura. It's, it's, it's affordable housing, and it's 60% of the median. And there's all kinds of structures that you can look into this, or Zenith actually proposed it in their presentation. George, if you have their presentation, they probably have it spelled out there. And it was, and it's, it may be geared towards young professionals, but it's anyone who fits that criteria. So they don't have to be young, they, you know, that, but it's anyone who fits that income criteria.
Thank you for clarity. Tony, I'm sorry.
I'm not sure it's clear, but I, I tried.
Thank you.
There is a formula, and Laura is correct, Mayor is correct, that one of the components is 60% of the median income within that region. The other component is 80% of the median income within that region. And, and the percentages are 15% of the 60%, and 15% of the 80%, which obviously equals 30% of the project. And that qualifies as affordable.
Gotcha. Thank you, Tony. Bill O'Brien, you, you wanted to say something before, sir?
Thanks, Chris. Hi, George. You said other TOD projects are moving forward throughout the state?
Yes, throughout the whole, throughout the whole New England area, Bill, New York, Westchester County, Massachusetts, yes.
Now, are they getting property basically for free in the very generous tax abeyments that we were, well, that was proposed for this project?
You know, there's, there's all sorts of debt. I, I have no idea. There's all sorts of business models that I would say the town creates and mandates similar to what I think we're probably going to want to do when we go back out. But I think it's all over the lot. I think what Zenith did is something similar to a project that they just completed elsewhere in Connecticut. And they were following that model. But as far as all the other ones, I know, everybody, excuse me, many developers are always looking to see what sort of deal they can create with the town. So it's known as the PPP or the 3P, private-public money. And I think it's not out of the question for the town of Stratford to have a little skin in the game. Is it giving away the property? Doesn't necessarily need to be. Is it leasing the property for the next hundred years? Could be, you know. Is it, maybe the town has a little bit of skin in the game in regards to the parking underneath, because we want that to be partial public. So there's all different ways, Bill, to sort of skin that cap. And I think that's going to be one of the things that's going to be much more considered in the next go-around, because we found out from the presentation, or the post-presentation Zenith did to you folks six weeks ago, that that is one, and I think you were one, Bill, that was very concerned about the financial stack. So along with what else we want to see from a visual point of view, I think the financial requests are going to be just as strong. And that's going to also bring developers in and out of the project, because it may turn some developers off, and it may turn some developers on.
Right, thanks. Yeah, I think, I think many of us were opposed to it being just too generous. But now, before anything happens, it's going to be what, another two or three years probably? But now, before anything happens, it's going to be, what, another two or three years, probably? In the meantime, can we, uh, use, well, everybody knows where I'm coming from, can we use it for lacrosse or soccer fields? Until a project gets developed?
You're above my pay grade on that one.
You know, Bill, in, Bill, it's a good point. In, you know, in the short term, I don't, we, we don't know if it's going to be two years or three years or, or eighteen months, but to your point, it's a beautiful piece of property, and, you know, how can we essentially use it as it's, and Mary, maybe I'll ask you on this, just so, if I make this point, it's clear on the phone. When we received that, I believe it was about 1.2 million, give or take, from the state for the environmental cleanup, that is all clean soil there. That, that wasn't caught, that wasn't capped, that was taken away. That, that's clean, clean land. Is that correct?
That is clean land, yes, it is. And, and one of the things the ECD likes to see is that the, when they provide that much money for a piece of property to clean it up, that it gets back on the tax rolls.
And to that point, do they give a understanding as to, you know, as long as the town and the community is working on that? Basically, if we wanted to put something short-term, like to Bill's point, if we wanted to throw a soccer field on there for a summer, just so.
They're not mandating, they're not mandating anything, but, you know, in other words, they've been, they've provided a lot of money to Stratford, to ECD, for cleanup. And, you know, they like to see that something is cleaned up and put back on the tax rolls. And they don't, they're not going to mandate anything to us about what we do with that property. I'm just saying in general, that's what they like to see.
Understood, understood. Thank you. Maybe that's, Bill, maybe that's something we can, we can have a conversation about and, and look at.
Thanks, Chris. I just, I just, I'd hate to see it sit empty for five years when we could make it available for recreational use.
Yeah, or even just making it a, you know, throw us a picnic table, make it a simple park for people to enjoy.
Right, exactly.
That's something we can follow up on. Any other counselors have questions or thoughts or concerns right now? Nope, I don't see anybody, anybody from the RDA that wants to weigh in anything further?
I know, the other thing I'd like to close in, sort of in responsibility somewhat, is that, as I mentioned before, we've been at this for three years, and we're going to be here till, you know, till it gets done. I'd like to, you know, the whole, one of the reasons we're asking all of you to join us tonight, and I truly appreciate you joining us, is to try to keep the wheel moving. You know, we, we don't want to lose momentum on the project. We'd like to, I think it's important to the town of Stratford. We've heard from many of the owners down there, the retail owners, it, it's tough doing business down there, you know, it's, it's a, it's a landing zone for a couple of restaurants, and we've all seen them come and go way too often. So to put some density down there next to the train station, to, you know, get more activity, night activity, day activity down in that area, I think it's important to the town of Stratford. And then also, I feel somewhat obligated with the members of RDA to keep it moving forward, to get this back on the, the tax maps as, as quickly as we can. So I'd like to keep on getting aggressive as we can. Hopefully get more good response from the town council with some, I'll call it, new direction in regards to going on to, back out to an RFQ, RFP. We have had some other phone calls from developers, and we're trying to not do too many one-d, two-z's, because then, then rumors start flying that, you know, discussions are happening, and I don't want to go back into that. I don't think nobody does. So I'd like to ask everybody to keep their thinking caps on. Let's keep this an open dialogue, very transparent, and make sure we keep on moving as aggressively as we can, because I think all the comments that came out tonight are good ones, as they continue to be. I don't think anything is insurmountable. Let's not rule out the garage below just because we think it might not work. I don't rule out anything in time. No, it doesn't work. We could definitely have those conversations with John Casey. If it gets ruled out, we already know we offer underground parking, which is still good. It's still hidden from the streets and still hidden from the public. So I'd like to ask everybody to keep their thinking caps on as a response to tonight. Anybody that has any other ideas or recommendations, please forward it to Chris. I think he should be the person to go to. And then Chris can forward that to the RDA, and the RDA can continue to work on your behalf to get this done as quickly as we can.
So, George, thank you for, for everything, for tonight, for, to the whole RDA and for everything you just said. I, I wholeheartedly agree with you in terms of continuing to move forward. What I would ask, two-pronged, what I'd ask of the council is, is give me your feedback. You know, we had a good dialogue. I'm glad we did this tonight. It's, it's, when people talk, things happen, right? So we're communicating, we're talking about this. Give me your feedback on, on what your main thoughts are based off of what we've talked about and discussed, keeping in mind the, the concerns of the constituents and what they initially wanted. And, and to George and to the RDA, Tony, Randy, Mary Beth, Dick, thank you for everything. I am not opposed to, to basically looking at putting out an R, another RFP, another RFQ for this, and continuing the ball moving forward with, with more feedback. All right. Unless any other counselors have anything, I will.
Yeah, Chris, before I wrap it up, I do want to say, this is Bill O'Brien again, that I appreciate all the work Zenith, did I pronounce that right?
Yes, correct.
Developer put into it, and even the fact that they're here listening tonight, that tells me they're still interested, and maybe they'll come back with some good feedback. So thank you all.
And awesome. So I'm gonna, I know George opened it up being that it was, took a roll call. I'll, I'll adjourn the meeting as, as, because it was a technically, in RDA, special counseling. And the reason we called it tonight for simplicity purposes was that this was the regularly scheduled meeting of the, of the RDA this month. Friend, in case anybody, someone asks me why I did it tonight, well, this was the regularly scheduled meeting. So there you go. I didn't try to, I didn't try to move the wheel. But thank you all for, for your time, for your evening. Enjoy the week, and this meeting's adjourned.
Okay.
Thank you all.
Thanks, Chris. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.